Welcome to the November 11th, 2021 Parma City School District Board of Education meeting. Would everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row call, Mr. Sanusio.
Mr. Brats.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Price.
Present.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Smilak, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting? And if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty may be addressed.
Yes, I will.
All right. At this time, information to the board?
Yep. That's me. Actually, brief presentation. So we are going to, similar to what we did two years ago with our senior leadership team, we're going to start to present in this portion of the board meeting so that you understand what we're working at. Certainly, you see our work through resolutions, but sometimes resolutions don't tell the whole story. So I'll start, but each meeting, one of our senior leadership team members will present as well. First of all, we start with our district goals. Our most important district goal has been and continues to be to increase student achievement. That's why we exist. We want to make sure that students are achieving to the top of their possible potential, that they're leaving us much better than they came to us with. We also want to make sure that we improve transparency throughout our communities. That's always been a goal of ours. We think we have great stories to tell here. We think we have stories in terms of achievement, stories in terms of opportunities, certainly stories in terms of our fiscal picture that need to be told, and we want to make sure that we work to do that. Finally, is practicing fiscal responsibility. If you remember, just a little bit of a history lesson, this used to be our first goal. Our first goal when we started was to make sure that we got our fiscal house in order. And at the time, we had just been coming out of some very troublesome financial times. And because of the fact that we could now be off of the audit list and the fiscal caution list, because we do have the private auditor that comes in, rate associates, we were able to move that down, really put increasing student achievement exactly where it needs to be, which is on top of our list. Major functions of my department, and we will do this again with each of our senior leadership team members, you'll notice the template will really be the same, but certainly the substance within it will be different. Ultimately, I'm the chief executive officer, so I don't usually like to say that. I don't really like to act like that. I'm part of the team, but ultimately, anything, besides anything that happens in Sean's office, everything else ultimately in this district is my responsibility. And so sometimes people call and say, sorry to bother you with this, or sorry to bother you with that, and I appreciate it. They're sorry to bother me, but ultimately, it does sort of stop with me. That's what a CEO is responsible for. Master planning for strategic consolidation is something that I had a lot of role in throughout 2019 and 2020, and anticipate doing the same in 2021. Our leadership meetings are really critical when we call our leaders together. We do a lot with instruction, a lot with resilient learner. I try to fold in also an organizational health piece. We'll talk a little bit more about that in one of my later slides. This has really been a core of what we've tried to be since we began together. Organizational health can actually be one of the greatest advantages to being a successful organization. That's when you have a culture that allows people to flourish, that you don't have an excess amount of politics, that you don't have an excess amount of upside agendas, that when people have something to say, they don't do end runs, they say it to the person. What we've always tried to create, we actually did some work with our central office team yesterday around that organizational health piece, we've always tried to make sure we're advancing as a healthy organization. Our district leadership team is critically important. On our district leadership team are principal and also a representative for the teaching ranks, some also folks from our central office that fold in as well. My area tends to be the resilient learner piece, or the PBIS piece, or the embrace all piece. A little bit more of the whole child piece tends to be my focus. Achievement tends to be Mrs. Stracco's focus, and she'll talk more about that at our next meeting. I also do expulsion hearings. Many superintendents appoint a hearing officer. I've always wanted to make sure I'm a part of that firsthand. I want to actually have that conversation with the family, have that conversation with the student. I don't necessarily like information to be passed along. These are critically important decisions that we're making in terms of child's future, and ultimately, it's my decision. I want to be hearing all of the evidence on either side. Finally, policy, something that we've done a great job of here. For me to stand here and say that, you know, I'm in charge of policy, basically what that means is Mrs. Kim Hansel is phenomenal at organizing that, and I just ask her what she needs, and that's kind of my role in policy. But we have been much more efficient in actually making sure that we keep up with the new updates and that we are changing policies when we need to adjust any circumstances that we might see. So we'll also ask all of our senior leadership team members to sort of introduce their team and their direct reports. The assistant superintendent and the executive director of human resources and operations, Tiffany and Carl, technically report to me, but I would tell you that this is like coaching Michael Jordan and Kobe Bryant. What did the coach really have to do? And because they're so competitive, they're probably sitting there trying to figure out who's Michael Jordan and who's Kobe Bryant. It's probably what they're doing. But they are so both phenomenally talented and phenomenally driven that this is really a partnership. There's not really much supervision that goes into these relationships, if any at all. This is a partnership where we come together and really try to advance for the better run of the district. Administrative specialist for communication, Ms. Popik as well, somebody that reports to me, Jennifer Nance, who just started today, actually. You met her at the last board meeting. She'll be the administrative specialist for enrollment improvement. Our elementary principals, Tiffany and I split up the principals. She has the secondary plus Mrs. Saville. I have the elementary plus Ms. Sable and supervise them. My administrative specialist secretary is Melissa, who you see there with her two beautiful daughters. Just some highlights, and we will go through this, and again, each senior leadership team member will take some time to talk about highlights within their department. For me, it's really highlights from throughout the entire district is, you know, again, that chief executive officer means I sort of own all of it. Our curriculum technical education programs continue to be absolute gems of what we provide. And despite the fact that we endured COVID and had ins and outs, these outcomes, which are actually on the report card, we didn't get grades this year because of COVID, but we still had statistical reports. Ninety-four point seven percent of our students were, again, this would be classic 2020, within six months, they were employed, they were in the military, they were in apprenticeship, or they had started post-secondary education. I always, that statistic to me means more than any other statistic that we will ever show you. Because if you can tell me, I'm going to enter a program, and I can tell a parent, child's going to enter this program, and there's a ninety-five percent chance that within six months after they leave the Parma City Schools, they're going to not just kind of be working at some job they found, but really be engaged in a pathway to a career. It's exactly what we want for our kids. And our career tech program, under primarily the instruction or leadership of Mrs. Plageman, does just a phenomenal job. Ninety-four percent, four-year graduation rate, forty-four percent of the students left with some type of industrial credential, meaning they're ready. They're not just, you know, applying for a job. They have that credential showing, I have these qualifications, and I completed them for free in the Parma City Schools. And then eighty-five point four percent had some type of technical skill attainment, and that's based upon a test. So we have many different reasons to be proud of what we do here in the Parma Schools. Our career tech pieces continue to be really shiny examples of the opportunities that we provide to our kids. We're also very proud of the programs we've implemented to support students. This is even more important coming out of COVID. I know that we had struggles with, you know, in-school and out-of-school and hybrid and virtual learning, and so now we're all back. But at the same time, that resilient learner piece that we started to call out actually four years ago, that resilience needs more attention than it's ever needed before. Because our students don't have the stamina. Some of them didn't have enough of the structure over the last several years to be ready to be in a school environment, to be ready to be here every single day for one hundred and eighty-five days. So the PBIS work that we've done, and that's positive behavior interventions and supports, our schools have really embraced this as a way to say, these are structures we put in place to teach and then to reinforce proper student behavior. And ultimately, behavior, and this is important too, behavior is never an end in itself. These don't exist just so we can get these medals. Behavior exists as a means to an end, and the end is that achievement piece. And so the better we can do in terms of structuring that culture, achievement moves as well. You see the schools that had bronze medals? We actually had two silver medals last year, Parma Senior and Thorough Park. Silver means that in addition to tier one, which means, you know, what every child gets, silver says, what's tier two look like? What about the kids who can't make it in tier one? They still need a little additional support, and that's a silver medal. And then gold is actually that third tier. And John Muir, under Dr. Schneider's leadership, along with Ms. Krusek, who is now in our curriculum and instruction department, achieved that gold medal last year. We had never seen a gold medal anywhere in the region, so we're very proud of John Muir and their accomplishments. In terms of improving transparency, just some highlights again from last school year. We're proud of the community engagement events we had. This has always been really part of our philosophy is that we have to make sure that regardless of your status in the community, you see the Parma City Schools as adding value to your life, as adding value to your family's life, and the AgCon, Byers Field, movie nights, those were ways to do that. We have really impressive resources. That Byers Field is the second largest football and soccer stadium in Cuyahoga County. We have to make sure that we're using it. We have to make sure that our community feels a tie to us. We have AgCon and the Byers Field movie nights, a way to do that. We have a bonfire scheduled. My weather prognostication record continues to be extremely poor because we canceled it based on a forecast, and then sure enough, the rain held up another two hours. So we'll pair that right next to the time I called it calamity day because it was going to be one hundred and ten degrees in our classrooms, and then all of a sudden it was seventy-four. So those two elements were not really shining moments for me, but we have great systems in place for next year's bonfire that we look forward to. Facebook Live, when we went through COVID, we answered every single question. I think, oh, it was a Wednesday night, Thursday night? We would sit there for two hours if it took it and just try to answer any question that parents had. There was a lot of angst during that time, a lot of anxiety around what would school look like, and we tried to provide as much information as we had at that time, and I think those Facebook Lives, folks really appreciated it. We will continue to have town hall meetings. This was something that honestly might be a little cliché, a little bit more cheesy when we started it, but I think there's value to show people, we've done a town hall meeting every single quarter. So if you're somebody that can't, you know, make time to come to a board meeting or doesn't want to maybe fill out the form to ask a question, town hall meetings are free for us. They're open, anyone can ask us any question. We did that throughout the bond issue campaign. We do it at least once quarterly, and if we need to do it more based on anything that might be happening, we do that. We're also proud of the way that we've grown our Chamber of Commerce partnership. We have a great working relationship with our Chamber of Commerce. It's one of those pillars of the community that we want to make sure we connect to. We actually planned to rent some space in our central office building here. That's sort of on hold, they're going through some personnel changes. We offered up Normandy when they couldn't, they couldn't do their ribbon rack at Tri-C this year, and we offered Normandy and had it here. Again, just trying to make sure that anybody who lives within our three communities feels connected and feels that we add value to the community. Practicing fiscal responsibility is largely Sanusio's role, but I'm also proud of some of the things we've done on our side of the house that really reinforce all of the strong messages that he sends from a fiscal responsibility standpoint. I'm proud of how we focused our ester funds. We obviously got millions of dollars from the federal government that was really something that hadn't happened before. We had to make some strategic decisions about how exactly should we really deploy those dollars. And we knew that coming out of COVID and coming into this year, our students were going to have gaps, certainly from a learning perspective, but also from a social-emotional learning perspective, or social-emotional being in classroom perspective. Smaller K to four class sizes, it's obviously going to help the teacher be able to give students the attention they need at an elementary level. Additional counselors, additional home liaisons, social-emotional curricula, so that students are learning those skills of resilience, those skills of stamina, right in their classrooms on really a daily or a regular basis. We're also very proud of the work that Mr. Hoon has done, work with our out placements. When he started, obviously, 2019, we had ninety-four students placed outside the district. Ninety-four kids, we had said to the family, we can't meet your needs here. You're going to have to do something different, and we were going to have to pay for that. And that cost, that bill, is always exorbitantly higher than it is actually if we're able to do that here. So we were spending four and a half million, just about, give or take. This year, we're down to forty-eight students from ninety-four, and that bill is down to two point six million. That's a savings of one point eight million dollars into our general fund because we are equipping our educators, equipping our families to have the skills to meet our students' needs right here. It's also advantage to the student. We always want our students to feel that you belong here. You don't belong at some school across town that we're going to take you on a bus ride to with some folks from all kinds of different school districts. You're a Parma kid, you belong in our Parma Schools, and we're proud to be able to serve you. And really, because of Mr. Hoon and his department's work, that's a very strong reduction. ACES Center is another example of that. We have now fourteen students placed in ACES. That was, you know, obviously, sort of a failed experiment my first year when we talked about putting that at Renwood, but we've now built that into a wing at Parma Senior High, and it's really something that functions, functions very highly, and we're able to keep our students with autism here in the district, and again, that's a savings as well. We've also always looked, when someone leaves, or looking at making a change or a tweak to our personnel structure, we've always looked to take money out of here and invest it really as close to kids and buildings as we possibly can. That started with a really, I think it was an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction in 2019. We've just added to it each year. An example, just in case we forgot, we had a great gentleman, Drew Stevens, that left last year. He was a director, but we eliminated the position. Our folks stepped up, we actually replaced him with somewhat of a much lower paid rank, and we moved on. And so we have that next person up mentality. We have that mentality of when something changes or we need to tweak something, we're always looking to subtract from our central office. Our kids, where our kids are, where our teachers are, that's where resources belong. We're proud of that number of one point five million dollar reduction. So what are we looking ahead? And all of our senior leadership team members have two goals, and they're going to present their goals to you. We talk about these goals as senior leadership team. We do some reflection about, you know, how can Sean help me with my goal, how can I help Carl with his goal, et cetera. So two, my two goals, first is master planning. We have to continue to look at updating a master plan, and we plan to do that in the first several months of 2022. This would be increasing transparency because, again, we have to engage the community, but also practicing fiscal responsibility and making sure that we can talk about how these buildings are smart, long-term investments. The success indicator, how are you going to know if I meet my goal? First of all, we should have a master plan, and my hope is the board would adopt that in the second half, or second semester of this school year, actually. So in terms of action steps, we want to outline the process. We actually want to do that sooner than later, before the end of 2021, including who are we inviting, what kind of meetings are we looking at, financial enrollment data, questions to pose in terms of what we want to get community input on. We want to implement that process really by the end of the third quarter, achieve board adoption of a master plan by the end of the fourth, and then outline a campaign strategy into the summer. So we know that this continues to be sort of the albatross that we face as a district, and so it's really me taking this on to say, how can we lead a process, and how can I help to facilitate that process so that we can get a master plan that has three pillars of support? Number one, you have to have your senior leadership team on board. Number two, you have to have your board of education, and that third piece that we've struggled so mightily on is the community, and we've got to get that third piece. The second, and this is going to be news to the board because I really haven't talked about it, but we have talked a lot about Parma being sort of a one-stop shop, and how we are still large enough that we can meet any student's needs, and we've shown that we've done it. We've shown that with ACES. We opened ACES, and it's a success. We've done that with Parma Virtual Learning Academy. We had folks from Cuyahoga Falls asking if they could come to Parma Virtual Learning Academy because it was the closest to Cuyahoga Falls they could find that was actually offering synchronous instruction. Maybe everybody else, you had to watch tape after school, or you had to go online and use Apex. Our teachers during the day are doing that. Folks were asking, can, we don't know how you're doing it, but can you come do that? So with ACES, with PBLA, with Parma Alternative Secondary School, we want to start a third. We want to start, or actually, this would be a fourth, an additional program, and we'll call this PAGE, or write down anyway. And just as ACES was nothing more than one PowerPoint slide, and if anybody remembers Jackie Roberts, she shredded me about it. She figured it out that it was maybe three or four PowerPoint slides. PAGE isn't much more right now, but the idea behind PAGE is the same as the idea behind ACES. Let's start with a vision. Let's find somebody who shares the passion and has much more expertise than I do, or really anyone else on the senior leadership team, and let's have that person develop, just like Caitlin Sable developed ACES into something that we can all be proud of. Let's do the same for our gifted students. We have done much to address the end of the spectrum where students are struggling and need the supports. We also have to turn our attention to saying, how do we have a pipeline from Parma Schools to Harvard, from Parma Schools to MIT, from Parma Schools to West Point? We want to create an opportunity for students where you know that if you enroll in that, this is an elite, enriched program. And we know that we have to start small, just like ACES did. We know that we have just nothing more than this slide right now, but just like one slide turned into ACES, that's what we envision for PAGE. So this year, we would stay a clear vision for the program, build a structure to start to shape the program during next year. So this does not open next year, that's important for me to clarify, just like ACES. We appointed Caitlin Sable two summers ago. She had a full year in addition to her job to plan some of the ins and outs, find a place, really look at the structure. Same thing we would be doing here. We want this to be advised by folks from the Ivy League, by folks from West Point. We want college boards guidance. We want them to say, if you really want your kids coming out of here with a thirty-two ACT and three rides to Ivy League schools, here's how you're going to do this. That's who's going to help us plot this journey. And then ultimately, we would identify a program leader for next school year. So it is sort of an ambitious goal, but if we're truly going to be a one-stop shop, and we are absolutely large enough to do that, I think it's a goal that's important for our district. Most importantly, it's important for our families, of course, sending their kids to Menlo, to Tremont, Montessori. There's no reason we can't do better right here. We've done it in other programs, and we can do it with PAGE. Any questions? Oh, I still have one more, I'm sorry. So some priorities, in addition to some clear goals, what are priorities?
Be small.
We have labor agreements, and, you know, we just talked about those as we're allowed to do in the executive session, PEA and OPEC, so big spring and summer in terms of negotiations. We have labor peace right now. We're very proud of that labor piece. You could probably Google pretty easily some places even in the area that don't have it. It's critical to organizational health when we talk about, you know, that healthy organization piece, having that backbone of a solid collective bargaining agreement is very important. Visibility, I said this when I started and haven't done as great of a job, I want to make sure I get to a PTA meeting for each of the schools. So, you know, really, I go to PTA every month for the Parma Council PTA's, but I want to go to a Pleasant Valley meeting, I want to go to a Green Valley meeting. I think that that's important, to be able to have those connections and have those conversations. Walk-throughs continue to be important. We ask our principals to be in classrooms. Mrs. Stracco and I are also in classrooms. We also invest much of our time into making sure that our instructional playbook that we've worked so hard to clarify and reinforce over our time together is implemented with fidelity. Visits, you can see my tally mark up there, it's really scientific and high-tech, or it's really just tally marks. I want to explain Valley Forge, too. It's not that I have some affiliation for the Patriots. It's not because Mrs. Carpus's son played for the football team. Specifically, I had some Friday night commitments this year that I just, those were the nights that normally was home, or Parma Senior was out home, so just kind of was how the fall schedule felt in terms of athletics. I anticipate that will balance out as we go. I also have, and I don't want to overpromise here, I'm only one week into it, but I'm going to start to do lunch duty at the high schools on Friday afternoons in which I don't have anything, and that's a great way to connect with kids. I had some great conversation with kids last week in Normandy, who, you know, who are you, why are you here? And just got, got really that more informal piece that you don't necessarily get as a superintendent, and it really means a lot. Continue to strengthen community relationships, you know, again, and I think back to the block parties we had last year, and we planned these as ways to get out into the neighborhoods and talk about what our plans were. Mrs. Carpus and I stood, stared at each other at one of them, because Ross and I have another one, Mr. Schweitzer had another one. Still remember you on State Road there, Steve, I think it was the two of us in the hoes. So we have to continue to have ways to have organic conversations with folks. We're actually, this year, I've always done the Friday breakfast, and with the Friday breakfast, it's always been an administrator or board members, and this year I've changed that to community leaders every other Friday. So last week, for instance, had a great conversation with the director of recreation in Seven Hills. Really, I've never had a conversation with her. So, you know, you start to have those synergistic conversations that can really lead to some momentum, and if nothing else, a better relationship with other community leaders. Healthy organization continues to be critically important to me. Embrace all is really a piece of that, making sure that all of our students feel connected and feel, you know, really embraced when they enter our schools. Clarity, communication, consistency, three core values that we articulated the minute we walked in. It was the first activity we did with administrators, and administrators identified those as, this is what we want to be about. And from time to time, it's my job to remind people of that. The most critical conversations I've had this year haven't been about any specific element of performance, it's about reminding people how we talk to each other. Because when we have cordial, respectful relationships, growth can occur. We can find mutual ground. When we're yelling at each other, or being nasty, or sending off some sarcastic email, everything breaks down, and that's when you get people, you know, pigeonholed in their position. It's critically important that we continue to be important, I'm sorry, critically important that we continue to be healthy, and it's a large part of what I try to make sure that we are. So with that.
Are you sure that's one slide?
Pam?
One more slide.
More slide.
All right, great, thank you.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. You know, for a lot of it, I'm pretty familiar what your gap description is, some of the things you've been trying to do. I'm going to skip to the, toward the end there. Absolutely thrilled with the idea of PAGE, and you probably know that. Absolutely thrilled. Thank you. But I assume that if you want it for the next school year, you know, would have said the next.
Two years.
Twenty-three.
Yeah.
And that you want to start putting that together, obviously, as soon as you can. That's just outstanding. And the, I call them the three legs of your stool, kind of, you have, you know, excellently put together now, you want to move forward with each of those, each of those areas. Congratulations. And I'm glad, I'm glad that the departments are going to start with their presentations. Is this going to be departments this year, not schools?
We want to schools this year. We did schools the first year, quite frankly, it got pretty lengthy, and so we actually do that with our senior leadership team, and we'll do the senior leadership here at this level.
All right, thanks.
I'm also excited about the PAGE, I stole my thunder on that one. I do have a question about that, I don't, maybe you said it and I missed it, I was like, what's the student selection process going to be?
It's something we would have to work through. The piece that, I want to be clear though, is it is meant to be elite, and so we will have a selection criteria that we will hold to. You know, we need to look sometimes at an honors program, and really, John taught me this, I mean, the parents, you know, have responsibility for the kid. If the parent really wants their kid, and we're going to put them in, and they're going to support their kid, and all that works, this really wouldn't be that way. We're going to have some strict criteria because this is, this is something we want to really protect as elite.
There's gifted criteria out there that's defined.
Right. Right. And that's always kind of curious. Because I like the process that you're going through to try to build, you know, military, Ivy League, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's outstanding.
To be clear, I would have never qualified to.
Were we questioning that?
He was talking about criteria, I would not be either, so.
So, are you, you're good. I, I love it. I did not know prior to today, though, that John Muir was the first gold medal in the region, which is phenomenal. And I did tear up when I saw the PAGE slide because several years ago, Haley Tastis gifted my daughter for the National Registry, and we couldn't service her here because we had a higher criteria here because of budget restrictions to service her. And that was just my own experience, but there are so many kids that just, that it's an amazing pathway for them, and beyond thrilled. And I think that watching how we built Aces, and giving them that year to figure all the things out, to take the time and step back and say, we're not going to learn on our kids' time, we're going to learn and do this right the first time. I am so grateful for that process, that's a place.
Yeah, I want to clarify, too, because we have had to send letters to folks instead, you know, qualify, child won't be served here, and Mrs. Strocco is working there, I think you'll present in the next presentation, really hard to make sure, regardless of Page or not, that we don't have to send them about it anymore. And we're really working at overall the opportunities for gifted and honor students.
Will the Pages program just be for secondary, or?
No, in fact, we envisioned growing it just like.
Okay.
We envisioned starting very small.
We used to have a table learner program for many years that served elementary students, and that provided a lot of opportunities for kids, which has been gone now for, gosh, how many years? I'm not quite sure, but this sounds really like an exciting opportunity for our students again, you know, sometimes we don't always focus on the needs of kids that are excelled, so great.
We're going to, we're going to look, actually in two weeks, Mrs. Strocco and I, and I guess you can as well, are going to Sandusky, who has done a similar model, I think raised three to five. We've been trying to look at Tremont-Montessori as well, wondering if Montessori would be an approach here to really distinguish this as different. Some communication gaps there, but we're working through that.
So there are other, I'm sorry, are there other place, are there other schools besides Sandusky that you're saying have something like Pages?
There was one other one, and Columbus never got back to us, and we might have to, yeah, this is, this is very rare.
Very, very forefront, I guess.
Very good, very good, thank you.
I just wanted to say, in my two-year, almost two-years, this was the best presentation that I've ever seen. And I'm really impressed, and I don't know where you get the energy, I really, I really don't. I wish I had a little bit of your energy. But, and I'm really, I'm really impressed with the, that's a good bit. Just put a little in the water.
Just again, that.
What I like is, too, is the reaching out to the community at the breakfasting. I've learned a lot coming to those breakfasts and meeting with administrators, and I can see where other communities, or people out there, their leaders, that can all help, help us advance as an organization. I think it's a great idea, and I really think you're doing a great job, thank you.
You know, last piece, and this is just my own side, I mean, you can't be a healthy organization without a healthy board, and it's, you know, I'm thinking of this, where do you get your energy from? Because that's, that's the environment that you've established for us. You support us in doing what we think are the right things for kids, and the right thing for the district, and therefore the right thing for the community. And we, by and large, we have disagreements. When we have disagreements, we schedule a work session, that's the healthy way to do those things. There aren't head runs, there aren't last-minute, no pull this, I mean, it's the relationship that we've had, and I look forward to continuing.
I'd love to say this, one last thing, you just pointed out that there's not a lot of others, it's very rare. There was a time, not that long ago, where we were the pioneers with stuff, like, we were the beginning, and Mrs. Strocco was in a building, she was at PD. And then now you look at all the other communities, you know, it started popping up every, but we were the leaders, we set that precedent for our area, for the students and what students deserve. And I'm so grateful that's grown, and I'm hopeful for our other programs that that's where we're headed with those, too, and kind of set the stage for being the best.
Look forward to seeing a presentation at OSBA, the Pages.
Another shameless plug, right? Absolutely.
She's coming.
Thank you, Dr. Smolak.
Any other information to forward from Page?
No, the only other piece I want to mention was our fill rate. So we raised the substitute pay rate, when we did, we were in the twenties, and really the high, high twenties, I mean, more like seventeen to twenty-one, twenty-two percent. And this week, out of four, four of the five days, we were in the mid-fifties. So it is making a difference in terms of what we, you know, put forth and that you approve.
And that's pretty fast.
That's funny, well, yeah, I mean, you get it back.
Not only that, but it's good for our students, but it's good for our staff, they're not getting burned out by.
It makes it different, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, it was a lot, so I'm very grateful to see that.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, communications, I'm going to start, I have a couple this time, board members are on top. I actually have four, and I know people are rolling their eyes, going, oh my God, no, this is four quick ones. First thing I'd like to do is offer Jeanette Chamberlain, as I had spoken earlier, because this is communications and you're giving us a letter, I think that technically we can accept the letter as communications. Does that work?
Yeah, no, that looks great, whatever.
Yeah, I decided to roll it in there, or you can wait till the very end of the meeting, but, you know, give you.
It says that it's already up there, walking across the table.
Giving you a break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's got supporting documentation, so that's why the letter is not that thick.
We like documentation and data.
It's awesome, handwriting.
She does, it's very beautiful.
Very nice. The next thing I wanted to mention is, today is November eleventh, and that is Veterans Day. And I think I'd be remiss if I didn't, as, you know, just me and as the board, salute all that have served, all that have made the ultimate sacrifice, so that we can sit here in these types of meetings in this country and discuss, you know, kids, procedures, so on and so forth. That doesn't happen everywhere in the world, and I just want to personally, you know, extend my heartfelt to anybody that has ever served and ultimately made the ultimate sacrifice. I know we all know people, I was just saying before, I never got to meet my grandpa. Okay? I have the flag, I have the Purple Heart, but I never had him. Anybody else?
Well, I like to, you know, I was raised in a military family, so I appreciate the sacrifices my family made for us to be able to do this. Miss my dad dearly. I have a son-in-law that's now serving in the Army with my youngest up there, and so I thank him for stepping up, so. That's, that's, I appreciate it, and I thank all those, I have numerous wrestlers out there, military, from the Marines, the Army, to Navy, so they're part of family as well. So I appreciate it, and I thank them, I thank them, hope they can hear this, but I thank them for their service.
So over, since we have been sworn in, since twenty-seventeen, or twenty-eighteen was our first thing, in the commencement sense, I've kept track every year, we have passed out a hundred and six diplomas to students wearing stoles headed to, and a branch of our armed services, which is pretty, pretty incredible to see them walk across the stage with that kind of pride and, you know, where they're headed in life. So yes, thank you to all of those, not just those students, but all of our, all of our veterans.
My dad had served in World War II, and I lost him in high school, and one of my big regrets is not having been aware enough to have conversations with him about having served in World War II and what that experience was. I can remember the footlocker with all the stuff, but the rich conversations, you know, I missed out on, and, but thank you to all. My husband served in the National Guard, wasn't active duty all that time, but.
Still serving.
Did service for many years, and thank you all for those who have made the opportunities for the rest of us.
My dad was a sharpshooter in Korea, and I wish he was around today so I could talk to him, taught some of the stories he had. He only told me one story, he didn't like to talk much about it, but they were starving in Korea because it was cold and the Chinese had re-attacked, and one of the guys in his platoon was a, was a butcher, and they shot, one of, they shot a deer and their platoon ate fresh venison while everybody else was starving. So that's the one story that I like to tell that my dad shared with me. And I also have an adopted son that served on the USS Teddy Roosevelt, he just got back in, he's deployed in San Diego right now, so he's a career, he's a career guy, so I'm real proud of him. Glad they served.
All right, thank you. Oh, well, I guess I wouldn't take long, but. Everybody else, it's not my fault, right?
Not your fault.
I'd also like to make a mention and a thank you to those responsible, Carol, Charlie, our maintenance staff, that long overdue, we now have a ramp, for exception, needs people in front of Normandy, not only for our students, although that would be the primary, but for any community member that needs to use it to go in to watch a theater event, you go right into the theater area. People not familiar, the theater is right in the front, the auditorium is right in the front, and it's technically on the second floor, you take steps up to get to it. And in the past, you had to go around the back, get dropped off, go into, with this really kind of tiny elevator, maneuver around, go up to the second floor, and then walk all the way, not walk, it wheeled, whatever, all the way to the front of the building in order to see the performance. And that is no longer ever going to happen, so thank you to those that put that together. And finally, a week ago Tuesday, we had an election. It wasn't an election that, you know, we chose a president, or a governor, or a senator, or, you know, a US Congressman, or anything like that, but for local politics, it was very important, from city council, Parma Heights mayor, and for the people sitting here in this room for the Parma School Board. And I would like to congratulate Cindy Bratz, who was able to retain her seat, Steve Vaughn, who was re-elected, Amanda Carpus for being re-elected, and Mark Rudin, who happens to be here tonight, for winning a seat on this board and will be taking over in January. And to mention that Jack was the only one that didn't have to run. So congratulations on being able to relax a little bit. You've got two years coming up. All right, that is all I have for communications this evening. Any other board member?
Um, I think, do you have anything?
No, Sean does.
I understand.
Sean, Cindy, everybody has something? I don't know if I'm going to say this for the live or not.
Okay.
I think I'll say it for later, later, like, meetings later.
Okay.
The, I just wanted to, for anybody who doesn't know, the board members go down to Columbus once a year for Capitol Conference, it's hosted by the Ohio School Board Association, is a wonderful learning platform for all of us. Dr. Smolak was founder this year, and Robert Huhn, and great workshops, classes, sessions, things like that.
Sean.
Sean, sorry, sorry, Sean. Sorry. Lots of things for us to learn in that. And this past session, or this past conference, I was appointed by our Northeast Ohio Regional President to serve out our Regional Executive Committee and continue my work on our Public Education Advocacy Board, so I am very grateful to do that and continue serving our community and our students, not only within Parma City Schools, but across the state. And I think this is Bratz has something very more specific, very much more specific.
Well, it's an outstanding opportunity for its professional development for board members, and taking advantage of it is really, I think, important. We get an opportunity to go to dozens and dozens of choices of workshops to learn about lots of different topics in education. And I've heard, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I've heard that Ohio hosts the second-largest school boards conference in the nation. There are thousands of people that attend this, and it's a really rich environment for not only learning, but also collaborating with others from different parts of the state. And so it was really great, there are general sessions and meetings and keynote speakers, and among the, some of the things, a huge trade show as well, where you can get information about all sorts of different things for, from food service to safety and security, and turf for your athletic fields, and lots of things. But I'll just mention three workshops that I attended in particular, and one was I Am Because We Are, and it was a very informative workshop on restorative practices, Positive Parent Equity, which was given by our Ohio PTA President, as well as Angela Rovay, who was a past council president here, she was assisting in that workshop, so that had to do with the importance of the rich relationship of parents and schools, and PTAs leading a lot of that. So that was great. Also, setting the course for student achievement was real interesting, and lots and lots of information there on ideas and thoughts on improving what we do for kids. So it was a great experience, I'm grateful that we had the opportunity to go and learned a lot, and enjoyed a lot.
And I will have everyone know, Mrs. Bratz and I shamelessly ate free waffles and strawberry shark cake, and then proceeded to tell the nutrition services vendors there how amazing our in-house nutrition services are here. We were very shameless and self-promoting there.
Mark Gorman got a lot of free press.
Yes.
Off of, at more than one vendor, so.
Well, I'm going to brag about you, Ms. Carpus. Watching you in the meeting where they had amendments to the amendment, to the amendment, to the amendment, which I got tired of hearing about amendments, stand up in front of three hundred people and speak on behalf of children everywhere, without standing, without losing your cool, you might have been nervous, but you didn't show it. It was very impressive to watch, and lady, it was very good, I appreciated it, I'm glad I tapped through all the amendments of the amendment of the amendments. It was good to watch, it was good to see that, see me tackle.
Thank you very much.
And we met Patricia Heed.
Yes, we did meet Patricia Heed, and if anybody doesn't know, she's the mom from Everybody Loves Raymond, and we all got to meet her and take a picture with her.
Don't tell that story.
All right, I think Sean's starting.
Sean's starting.
So maybe it was a really long meeting, you asked earlier, I didn't realize it was going to be so long.
Feel free, I feel bad for people.
I'd like to have Charlie's on her feed, so.
Welcome, honey.
Okay, you want to next slide, Ben, please? So, I'd like to start with how many information we're able to plot, we're positive through June 2025. I always say this is snapshot time, this is what it looks like on November eleventh, but it doesn't mean what it's going to look like on June thirtieth. There are a lot of things that could change between now and then, some of the things Dr. Smolak has talked about, he says twenty-five percent of our revenue is from the state. Well, the governor's up for election soon, so is either we retain this governor, we have a new governor, we have a new, I think we continue the funding model, we just passed this last budget. There's another budget, two-year budget that comes in thirty by five-year forecast, so there are a lot of factors that take, get to take into account that could change the forecast. We have COVID-19 money, we receive about thirty-two million, we can get thirty-two million dollars on funding. And Dr. Smolak has talked about a lot of positions we hired through, K-4 class sizes, counselors, home liaisons, and to go to all these positions, the money runs out in 2024. So it's going to be a tough decision with Dr. Smolak and the board, is what positions do you want to retain, because that's money now coming back to the general fund. Do you guys like having five counselors, one for each grade? If so, that adds money to the expenditure of the entire forecast. Seventy-one percent of our property, money comes from property taxes, we'll always have a little reliance on that property tax, that's how schools funded, property taxes. Right now, we have uncovered cash at seven point seven million dollars by the end of twenty-six, but we do have a renewed levy that comes up during the time, it ends in 2024, so we need to pass that or the forecast gets much worse. The next slide, Ben? This is pretty easy to understand, you see the red line is, the blue lines are revenue, red lines expenditures, as the expenditures cross the revenue, the green line, the fund balance is going to go down. That's just the definite spending, your fund balance is going to go down. State, we get twenty-five percent of money for the state, seventy-five percent for property taxes, so that's, that's kind of normal for schools, very, one of the next slide, Ben? So, and this is kind of a busy thing, but if you look at the blue line, the blue bar, you can see in 2018, we were kind of low, then went up and up, 2022, it's starting to come down, and 2025, we're negative. And we like to have thirty to sixty of cash in, that's about twenty-five million dollars. We're going to probably end this year above that number, but as the years go on, we're not going to be above that. The next, this is just another slide, potential revenue or expenditures, we have, we have difficult decisions with, we're negative in twenty-six, do we put up a levy, or am I able to stretch out this mandate so we don't have that revenue? Our last new mandate is 2011, so it's ten years right now, and it's eleven years since we've had it. And it's 11 years since we've had it in '11. This is kind of what I said before, most of the money around property taxes. House Bill 110 was restored with money to fiscal year '21 levels, and they have new funding for it now, which is funded for only two years. It's supposed to be fully funded in six years, but they don't fund it for two. So in two years, I don't know, are we going to continue that? Or is the new governor, the one that you say, or the wind is going to continue? If the new governor, he might, he or she may say, I don't like this money from whoever. I'm going to make my own. And it'll look good. Another couple of things up to Dr. Smolik, talk about master planning. If there's facilities consolidation, that would affect the forecast. And also labor grants are up, so that could possibly affect our forecast. The next slide, then? Chances of revenue, like we were saying, with the funding falling off, it could change. SWSF is Soon Wellness and Success Fund. That was one of the governor's winded big programs. It was its own fund, and now they're bringing it back into the general fund. They do this stuff all the time. They change where money goes, but revenue, expenditures are going to be exceeding the revenue. So we're expecting, I've got to say, because of the spending. The next slide, then? Our expenditures, and I used to tell you guys, 80% of our expenditures are salaries and benefits, which is normal for most school districts, but they changed the funding formula. Before, the money used to come through us, the charter funds and charter schools and, Cal, not charter, charter schools and.
Ed Choice.
Ed Choice, that's what I'm trying to think of. But now it goes right to them. So before, we used to have $150 million in expenditures. Now we only have $138 million expenditures. We don't get more money, it's just we don't have a pass-through anymore. But if you have lower expenditures, the amount of salaries and wages seen as a higher percent.
Right.
So let's say it's 87%, and the last year was 80, it went up 7%. Do we give that any big raises? No, it's just you're dividing it by a lower denominator. So that's what it looks like. College credit plus will probably continue to rise, so we purchase services like the Waffleville. The next slide, then? Expenses keep increasing, like I said. This is kind of a breakdown. Wages are always going to be the highest of any school district. That's just your large, benefits are usually the second largest. So this is kind of just showing how it looks. The next slide, please? What now? All we have, we have up the renewed. We don't know what the budget's going to be in a couple of years. Our current governor, our next governor. Funds are going to go back to the general fund unless we retain this position. So there's always a lot of uncertainty, but right now, we're positive for it. So, do you guys have any questions?
Sir, Sean, like I say, like you said at the very beginning, it's a snapshot.
Yeah.
You know, for people that, you know, really don't understand the five-year forecast that may be listening out there, you know, Cleveland weather people give forecasts every day. And it's probably one of the hardest places in the country to give a forecast, being in the Great Lakes. And you all know that, you know, this is a five-year forecast. When they make a five-day forecast, that fifth day is pretty uncertain whether that's actually going to happen or not. So I just want everybody to understand what you emphasized at the beginning, that this is a forecast. This is not a really, like, a budget that everybody, you know.
Right.
It's fingers crossed. So, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, sure. So, could you explain how renewals work? I mean, you explained it to me, I understand it, but for the general public, the renewals, and I think the big question is there, does it, does the amount of money we get increase because our house, the property value is higher, the value is higher? Does it change, or does it stay status quo?
Yes and no. So I'll have to.
Inside village.
There's inside village and outside village, which I like to talk about all the time.
Yes, very big, no?
So the inside village does fluctuate with property values. So if our valuation goes up, we get the inside village, we get more money. So property values going up this time, we're going to get $2.1 million more, which is great. That's the inside village, not voted. But there's the voted village, which is the outside village, that when property values go up and down, we just get the same amount of money. Those are what we all call the emergency lobby. So if there's a $15.6 million emergency lobby, if property values go up, we get $15.6 million. If it goes down, we get $15.6 million. They just adjust the effective village. So if property values go up, effective numbers go down, vice versa. So we get the same amount of money.
So technically, for renewals, since the inside village is not voted on for renewals, strictly speaking, we don't get any more money if the houses are valued more.
The renewals are outside village.
Right, or, sorry, that's what I mean. So inside village is because it's not voted on. So if we're not asking about that, we're asking strictly renewals. That money will never change based on property values.
They'll adjust the miller's.
Correct.
Oh, actually.
Yes.
Yeah, how's Hill was at 720s?
920.
Yes.
But the monetary amount remains the same.
Yes.
Correct.
I just want to.
Not outside village.
I just want a clarification.
And it's up in 2024. And I think the first time you can vote it out is 18 months prior to expiration, which is pretty damn, like, March 23rd or something.
Is anyone?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Two. I have three things. One, on the funding pie that you had, we know what it is, but for everybody else, the 3.7, which is other, in revenues.
Oh, yeah.
Can you explain what that money is and where it comes from?
There's a lot of things that go into other. Sometimes it's, it could be student fees, which we have to charge the last two years. But it could be leases, we have self-power, we own, we have leases on that. It could be fees or we charge other governments for stuff. But it's just the things that don't fall in the main category. There are a lot of things that fall into it. These are a lot of it. But also, we get catastrophic costs that we give the, every year, which are students, the cost more than what the state gives us to average. So there's a lot of things that go into it, but it just didn't fall into other categories.
Okay. When, at what point, the slide moved really quickly. At what point do we start taking money out of the cash reserve to stay, to match the outpacing of expenditures? And what money do we, at what point do we start sucking money out of there?
Well, right now, we have $1.5 million in our reserve fund.
Okay.
It's still in the general fund. It's just segregated in the general fund. But next year, we start deficit spending, meaning our expenditures are higher than our revenues. So I kind of see it more as a rainy day fund. I don't want to take it out next year just so we have positive spending. That's to like, this would be, we have emergency, we can't make payroll.
Right.
And we need this money to make payroll. Or.
So the plan is not to take money from there?
Right.
So the five-year forecast in the deficit where we're in the red there on it last year still maintains the rainy day fund cash reserve? And how much is in the cash reserve?
$1.5 million.
Okay. My last question is more of a, more of a, I guess, kind of a statement, just for some clarity. The staff we hired with the Essor funds for COVID, the increase, I think Dr. Smolik kind of spoke about the need for having those particular services, especially coming back after all of that. A lot of those services, home liaisons and things like that, for anybody watching too, made us hold something that we cut back before we were, any of us would sit in these chairs. So it brought us back to hold to provide the services that our kids lost back in 2016. So I think that's important to kind of note, too. And obviously, yes, those are going to be hard conversations, but.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And we're not anywhere near luxurious levels.
Right.
For instance, kindergarten, you know, class S's and stuff, you know, 25 or 26, which is very, very.
High.
Were you 18 or 19 at this point?
21.8, I think, there, like, 21.
So, yeah, we're still.
We're still higher, but.
Yeah, we're just less high.
I wouldn't question the.
No, I know, I just.
Decisions, I mean, but they're all good programs, it's just.
We'll have to make decisions.
Bonding them, that's the problem.
Right. It was a good way to get them back and get the, our students, our services we need and have to figure out how we're going to.
It's the ultimate role.
Yeah, how we're going to make it sustainable, and you got it. Other than that, thank you for all of the information and stuff. It's a lot, it's not a bit surprising, though, because you do a pretty good job keeping us informed on a monthly basis to watch trends and stuff. So we're very grateful that it's never spent on the base.
Sean, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I understand a lot.
Like putting it into a format for everyone, yeah. That makes it easy to look at, understand.
A little disappointed you didn't pull a five-hour energy out of your pocket.
You want mine?
Do we have a PTA council report this evening?
She does. For Mrs. Bamba, we never take an hour at the beginning before we begin.
She is so patient.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sharon Bamba. I'm the Parma Council of PTA's third vice president, and I am here to present the Parma Council PTA report. Last night, we hosted our November General Meeting. We were excited to have a representative from the City Recreation Department to share about programs for our families. Thank you also to Kristen Plageman for visiting and presenting information as well. We are finishing up collecting submissions for this year's Reflections Program. The Reflections Program is a national PTA program to promote arts at the schools. All submissions from the units are due back to Parma Council by November 23 at Central Office. Winning pieces are selected at the council level, and then they will be forwarded to Ohio PTA for further judging. We are also looking forward to hosting our winter luncheon at Pazos on Wednesday, December 8. We will be rattling off baskets at the luncheon to collect money towards the community scholarship, as well as through online sales via Cheddar Up from November 15 to December 3. Winners will be drawn at the winter luncheon. The link will be posted on our social media and our PTA website, along with the pictures and descriptions of the baskets. Our Scholarship Colli D'Poincetta Sale closes on November 17. We thank everyone who supports our fundraisers. Orders will be ready to pick up on Saturday, December 4, at Parma Senior High. Our scholarship chair will be working to schedule times to visit the high schools and review the scholarship program with the seniors in January. We will also prepare a video for the students who will not be in the building to view. We are working hard on our upcoming Family Health and Safety Fair that will be held on Saturday, February 19, at Parma Senior High. Details will come soon. We wish everyone a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The reflection thing, by the way, is very, very cool. My daughter won, I think she was second in the state with that, with her reflection of her choreography as a class lurch. Just a little shameless bragging.
Well, we had, we had a few that have made it to nationals, so I'm really excited. And we're hoping to increase those students who participate. So I know we've been reaching out to a lot of the staff members, art and literature and other things to kind of increase it. So I'm looking forward to seeing the submissions. That's always exciting.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Any other communications this evening? Seeing none? Any amendments this evening? Amendments this evening? Any requests to about, I don't know those.
Snapped in line.
To speak. Excuse me, on agenda items. I move to send a curriculum, Mr. Vaughn.
I have record of proceedings.
I have one record of proceedings, I think that's the second.
Oh, geez, I got to answer that one. Approval of Record of Proceedings. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-11485. Approval of Written Record of Proceedings from October 27, 2021.
Oh, second.
And we have motion second for adoption of Resolution 2021-11485. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Nice. 2021-11485 has been approved. Now I go to Creighton.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-11-486, approval overnight out-of-state field trips.
Second. And motion second for 2021-11486. Questions or comments?
These are makeups? Are these the makeup ones?
No, these are different ones.
These are Brendan?
Yeah.
I knew we'd done some makeup ones, but these are, these are just.
No, I'm just, Mrs. Strapp, we're doing a nice job of coming up with a checklist that all of these have to go through in terms of, you know, refund procedures and how we notify parents. And then, actually, we're having our attorney draft sort of a release that parents would sign, sort of acknowledging potential COVID risks and stuff.
Perfect.
Yeah, very good. I think that was some makeup on.
I guess, and there'll be a lot of fundraising going on to support the cost to the students.
Lots of Malleys can't afford insurance.
I'm actually really excited, too, to see.
Well, we have the approved history.
That, because we have the one from the History Department I'm writing to. I love seeing the kind of breakout of all of them.
Hi, Bryce.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-11486 has been approved.
Excellent. Unless another board member has anything else to discuss, this concludes curriculum.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vaughn, I move to Mr. Kreis with business.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2021-11-487, declaring select pupils impractical to transport for the 2021-22 school year.
Second.
I have a motion second for 2021-11487. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-11487 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-11-488, authorizing disposal of unneeded access points.
Second.
And motion second for 2021-11488. Any questions or comments?
You guys don't know what access points are. It's that thing on the ceiling with the blue dot. We get the wireless, wireless internet.
Thank you.
We don't know what it is.
So we have some that are unneeded, apparently.
Yeah.
There you go. You have a motion of second?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-11488 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-11-489, authorizing sale of five unneeded buses to the Lorraine City School District.
Second.
Motion and a second, a couple of seconds for 2021-11489. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-11489 has been approved. Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes business for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Kreis, but right back at you with finance.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2021-11-490, adoption of updated 2021-2022 budget estimate and fiscal projections for fiscal years 2023, 2024, 2025, and 2026.
Second.
And motion second for 2021-11490. Any questions or comments? It's the five-year forecast.
Correct.
Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-11490 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-11-491, approval of the October 2021 financial report.
Second. Second.
Motion to second for 2021-11491. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-11491 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-11-492, ratification of investments.
Second.
I have motion to second for 2021-11492. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-11492 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-11-493, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-11493. Questions or comments?
I was going to ask a couple of.
Okay. ARP is American Recipe Plan. And the homeless grant is something that they awarded us $94,000 just the last relief bill. Just keep those money.
It's based on the number of homeless students that we have, actually. So it's appropriated based on the district's population. And we will use it largely to offset the cost of transporting students, which can be pretty significant because they don't necessarily live, or I'm sorry, they don't necessarily stay within the district of orders.
Is there a legal, a legal definition difference between, like, the McKinney Vents and the homeless, the disgruntled, do they all own that same umbrella?
Yeah, McKinney Vents is how it's provided.
And it's wherever they are parked, basically.
Right.
They declare that is my school district.
Right. And then, so, you know, we were talking, we transport somebody from Akron, correct? So students staying in Akron, you know, they meet the qualification of being certified as homeless, and so we, transportation is not ours.
Yep. That's the law. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-11493 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kreis. We now move to legislation. Mrs. Carvis or Mrs. Brod?
We do have some legislation tonight. Okay, so very, came down the pipe very, very quickly. House Bill 126 required districts to pass a resolution to contest property values. So basically, House Bill 126 made it so that the school district could not, specifically Sean, could not go in and contest a property value to recoup money owed to the school district because the property values were, the homeowner or property owner, rather, contested a property value. So we recoup how much a year? Roughly.
Well, I'll explain it. So like, the business value of $10 million, and it sells for $15 million, we're going to file something in the Board of Revision saying, okay, we want property value of $15 million, we want those property taxes. A lot of times, we settle with these businesses, we appreciate a lower value, but they give us what we get, that in the difference between the two $5 million there, they won't have to pay the county or the city their share. That's why they're settled with us. And that's about a million dollars a year. People potentially be losing if this bill passes.
So House Bill 126 essentially is going to take away our ability to do that. And this has been a very specific target for a specific representative. Mayor, he's been doing this for a very long time, and this was just the most recent language in House Bill 126. It's been pulled for the moment, but we really need to contact legislators and explain to them the damage it will do to local school districts. So if anybody wants to know who your legislator is, how to get ahold of them, email me, and I will help you. Senate Bill 229, the blended learning bill. It also makes certain changes related to the state report card. We have supported changes to this bill, which are reflected in the subbill in detail. Out more specifically, I'm not going to go through all those, but the most important part is the Senate Bill 229, which passed Tuesday. As the House Education Committee does not create any requirement for school district to obtain ahead of purchasing property, written permission from a charter of private school currently leasing the property. So that's a positive.
Very positive?
A very positive.
Usually you see it go the other way.
Yeah.
That's worth noting.
It was very, and I will say this to all of our local legislators, both not just right here in Parma, but we happened to be in Columbus when that came down, and many legislators across the state were kind of taken aback at how fast that House Bill 126 language slid in, and were all kind of receptive to hearing from their local school boards. Hold on a second. And they did work collectively to pull that so we can get some better language that doesn't negatively impact school districts, hopefully. But we have to make sure to keep the pedal on that so nobody lets it slide through again. It's not very often that something like that happens, and you have 6,000-plus school board members all in one centralized location to spread the word, so.
And some had the opportunity to go and testify.
Testify while we were down there.
Right while we were in Columbus, which was pretty great.
So unless anybody else has anything for legislation, that keeps us legislation for the night.
Thank you very much. We move to human resources. Mrs. Brod?
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-11-494, approval of the following certificated exhibits, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointment, approval of certificated non-compensated leave of absence, acceptance of certificated resignation.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-11494. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-11494 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-11-495, acceptance of certificated retirement.
Second.
We have a motion to the second for 2021-11495. Questions or comments?
Are these retirees coming sometime in springtime?
Yeah, they would.
Mrs. Violo here was, she commonly called herself my work wife. We worked in an inclusion class together. She's a great lady. I didn't know she was still working until this came. I thought she retired. Yeah, I thought she retired shortly after, but great.
Yeah, we'll recognize.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-11495 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-11-496, resolution to enter into a separation agreement.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-11496. Questions, comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-11496 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-11-497, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments replacements, confirmation of change in classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignation, approval of classified non-compensated leave of absence.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-11497. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-11497 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-11-498, motion to adopt the attached memorandum of understanding for attendance, incentive for bus drivers, bus monitors, and mechanics.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-11498. Questions or comments?
I'd like to say a few words. These are difficult because, you know, you look at our workforce, and you really sort of see a lot of folks that are well below market value or well below the value that we would place on them in terms of the services that they provide. And so it's pretty rare and pretty difficult to sort of pick one classification or one job and be able to offer them, especially an incentive for coming to work and maintaining positive attendance. But we really have reached a crisis point with our bus drivers. We have been monitoring sort of our staffing levels. Mrs. Malika, Dr. Schneider have really done a lot of creative things in terms of combining routes, certainly don't have a lot of given room where at state minimums anyway, there's nobody within, beyond two miles that are, within two miles that are getting transportation. And we had to act quickly, and we had to be very focused on who we were able to offer this to, and it was specific to drivers. There is some money for incentives for bus monitors as well, or bus assistants, as well as mechanics. But really, the driver piece, we were close to not being able to operate school, and we had to be aggressive in targeting that need. So it's, again, difficult because you can choose almost any classification in our system and say, well, they ought to be making more, they ought to be making more. But this really became an emergent need for us, an emergency need for us. And so I'm hopeful of your approval this evening.
Agreed. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-11498 has been approved.
Unless any other board members have any questions or remarks to make, this will conclude human resources for the evening.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Brod, policies? Mrs. Carvis?
Yes, we have one adoption tonight, so I move to adopt resolution 2021-11-499, and it covers multiple policies. So policy 2266, discrimination on the basis of sex in district programs or activities. Policy 2370.01, blended learning. Policy 5350, student mental health and suicide prevention. Policy 5630.01, positive behavior interventions and support limited use of restraint and seclusion. Policy 7510.01, schedule of fees for use of district premises, and policy 8740, binding.
I have motion to second for 2021-11491. Any questions or comments? Mostly updates.
Yeah, I was going to say.
One piece that is not, one piece that is not an update that we really sought out and changed was the schedule of fees for use of district premises specifically, because we've had some folks that have reached out about using our pools, but in the policy, it actually specified that we paid our lifeguards minimum wage. You can't find lifeguards for minimum wage at this point. Minimum wage is still $7.50, and there's nobody that's going to come do that for $7.50. So we adjusted it and just struck that clause really. Still a lot of discretion in Dr. Schneider, who we trust is the overseer of facilities to set rates. There's definitely a guideline in there, but that lifeguard language had really become obsolete at this point. And being able to hire lifeguards is a benefit to the district because we can now be more aggressive about renting our pools. It's a benefit to our community because they'll be in use more often because they'll be able to be staffed. So everything else on there was really good.
Glad you guys did that because I know that something that came to board members is, you know, we want to use your, we want to use your stuff, and we can't. We could make money on this. Now we're good. Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-11499 has been approved.
Unless there's any other things to discuss, that concludes policy.
Thank you. I have an additional business to the board this evening, and it's regarding the 2022 PTA scholarship commitment. At this time, we need verbal commitment from 2022 board members to continue the tradition of funding three $1,000 Board of Education scholarships for District 2022 graduates. It's a $600 commitment from each board member to fund these scholarships and to work with the PTA scholarship program for the selection and distribution process. So if we could just get the 2022 board members to verbally say they're in.
You want to just go right down the line or?
Yeah. Of course. Absolutely. That's a yes.
Yes.
Yes, Pam.
Absolutely.
And I spoke to Mr. Ruda before, and he was affirmative.
Yes.
Would you like to say it?
Yes.
For the record, easily, yes. Thank you very much. Any other information requested by board members?
I have.
No. She said no. I move to adopt resolution 2021-11501 to adjourn. Before we do that, I'm sorry. We accepted these letters earlier on with board communication, okay? There was also a possibility to do it at the end of the meeting, but we decided to accept them earlier. So this is the part of the meeting that it would have been accepted. So for everybody listening, we have already done this, all right? So thank you. Now we move to adopt resolution 2021-11501 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
I have a motion to second for 2021-11501. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Schweitzer.
2021-11501.
I think we need to vote first.
It's now up for a vote?
Mr. Schweitzer? Mr. Vaughn?
Hey, let me finish.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
2021-11501 has also been approved. This meeting is adjourned.